I would like to call to order the 5:15 PM City of Statesboro City Council meeting. And ask Councilman John Rades to please give us an invocation and then let us enter our presidential conference.
Please, Brad. Lord, thank you for this day. Thank you for giving us wisdom and encouraged us to do the right thing for the city, for you, for thinking in your name. Please be with those overseas who are protecting our rights here and please be with those here who are doing the same thing. In your name we pray.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a recognition and presentation for proclamation for Global Entrepreneurship Week. And Councilman Boyum, who's instrumental in this being drawn up and he is on his way, so I'm going to hold that until he gets there. When he gets there, we'll present that item. Does this mean we have anybody under public comments on Agenda Item Number Four, please? Okay. Agenda Item Five is consideration of a motion to approve the consent agenda, which is approval amendment, Senate Consideration of Motion for the Surplus Disposal of Public Works Equipment and Other Items as listed. I want to give Council a few moments to look over that and ask Councilors, please make the motion to approve our consent agenda.
Make motion to approve the consent.
Do I have a second?
Sure.
Do I have any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the consent agenda motion passes. I would like to go to Agenda Item Number Six, please, which is consideration of a motion to apply for the Georgia Department of Transportation's fiscal year 2015 Local Maintenance and Improvement Grant. It will allocate $208,231 in the City of Statesboro. Brad, can you come forth and please provide us with some background on this?
Brad, the old Assistant City Engineer. As many of you may already be aware, the L-MIG is a grant that we get from the Georgia Department of Transportation every year. It's based on a formula that GDOT has, which takes into account your street mileage and population. And it's basically a pretty simple form that we get to send to GDOT to apply. We typically use the funds for street resurfacing every year because that's the simplest way to do it and we have a lot of needs in that area. The amount that we could receive from GDOT this year is $208,231 in eleven cents. And one condition of that is we have to provide 30 percent matching funds, which we're planning on providing a lot more than 30 percent matching funds, so that's not an issue. And if anyone has any questions on that, please feel free to ask them.
That's what we have to every year. You have to go through and reapply for it.
Yes, to reapply every single year. That's just the way they have it set up. And it comes from the motor fuel tax every year, like I said in the formulas. And I think every year that we've received it, we use it on district resurfaces.
It used to be large and state aid and GDOT took that and put it all into one grant.
For this year?
For every year.
But I mean, this is first year since they started the L-MIG?
No, it's probably three, four years now.
I think it's the third year.
Yeah.
Now they just remember the mark.
And now they just, they give you that money. They used to have to go through a lot more process and now they actually give you that once you told them what you wanted to utilize it for. In this case, for resurfacing, you have to commit at least 30 percent of the dollars of global matching, which we more than exceed with our resurface.
So for fiscal year 2015, most of the resurfacing looks like it's on, so it didn't go on North Side Drive, is that correct?
None of it is actually on North Side Drive. We just, there's several streets on there that intersect with North Side Drive. And that's, you have to look at the far left column and they'll tell you which street it is. Sorry about that.
Actually, BOT is going to resurface from, what is it, Wester?
Carmel. It's Carmel Drive.
Carmel Drive.
Past the city limits, now the east towards Brooklyn.
In DROP, it should be.
BOT's going to do that. They're also going to resurface a railroad coming from outside the city limits to the south, coming into town. I can't remember where the stopping point is, but they're going to come towards Tillman, I mean, Stevens Center Road, Tillman, coming into town.
When is that bit of joy going to happen?
Scheduled for next spring or summer.
Okay. When school, Georgia Southern's out?
Hopefully when Georgia Southern is out.
I'm just...
Which GDOT know, I can't guarantee that, but...
It'll get a contractor for so many months and then it'll be their choice.
Okay. Just, all right. Do I have any other questions from Council regarding Agenda Item Six before we ask for a motion? Okay. Do I have a motion to apply for the GDOT FY 2015 Local Maintenance and Improvement Grant, in which case GDOT will allocate $208,231 in eleven cents? Do I have a motion?
Second.
Second. Do I have any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. At this point in time, we're going to back up on the agenda and ask Councilman Boyum to introduce the proclamation for Global Entrepreneurship Week and to please present that. Thank you.
You tell me I don't present these very much. Do I have to read the whole thing?
I'm going to land it.
We just need to abbreviate it first.
I'm going to land it at your discretion.
Oh, thanks. Appreciate it.
Suzanne, do you have anybody else besides you?
Oh, I looked from the wrong direction. I'm sorry. You guys want to come on up and I'll read it out to you guys?
You got a big crowd just coming.
I got the whole group. So you guys have presented before Council before. This is Dr. Dominique Calpe from the Bee Bread over there and Think Big. And I don't know, your business card has a lot of titles. Suzanne Olman, I'm not sure your title.
Business Advisor.
Business Advisor. And Ben Meg there, Research Specialist there. And of course, they're all next door at the city campus. Let me just go ahead and read this out. Whereas during the week of November 17th to the 23rd, countries all over the world are joining together to host events and activities to support Global Entrepreneurship Week, an initiative aimed at young people to inspire, connect, mentor, and engage the next generation of entrepreneurs. And Global Entrepreneurship Week is a combination and expansion of the two initiatives, last year's Entrepreneur Week USA and the inspiration behind it, the United Kingdom's, excuse me, Enterprise Week, which was kicked off in 2004 by now Prime Minister Jordan Brown. And Global Entrepreneurship Week was founded by Calipman Foundation and Make Your Mark and is sponsored by globally the Ernst &amp; Young IBM and the New York Stock Exchange, excuse me. Whereas 76 countries will host Global Entrepreneurship Week activities, which include, they're now living in two, the first National Youth Entrepreneurship Summit in Ghana, Creativity World Forum in Peloton, Creative Entrepreneurship Day in Macedonia, Honda Foundation Prize in Japan, and the Open Company Project in Poland. And whereas Global Entrepreneurship Week seeks to inspire, introduce the notion of enterprising behavior to as many young people under the age of 30 who otherwise might not have considered it a path in their life. Connect, network young people across national boundaries in a global effort to find new ideas at the intersection of cultures and disciplines. Mentor, enlist active and inspirational entrepreneurs around the world to coach and mentor the next generation of enterprise talent as they pursue their entrepreneurship dreams. There's a lot of entrepreneurship in here. Engage, to inform opinion leaders and policymakers that entrepreneurship is central to a nation's economic, cultural, and to provide different nations with the opportunity to learn from each other on entrepreneurship policy and practice. Be it resolved by the Council of the City of Statesboro that we hereby declare November 17th through the 23rd as Global Entrepreneurship Week in Statesboro. So there you go.
See, Phil, that proclamation reading is not as easy as it is.
It's not. There you go. You have some... Oh, yeah. Phil, I missed it. I knew you were coming over. You're starting over. Yeah, those two mountains, this one there.
Yeah, we can quite hear it this way with this new system we have.
Good. Nope, the one for Al, no? Yes, ma'am. Who doesn't know a bitch?
Well, we can just point out, if you're not able to make the events in Poland or Ghana, you have events right here at the city campus starting tomorrow morning. So our entrepreneurs, our small business owners can get training on accounting practices, legal, as well as marketing events. And then tomorrow evening on networking at 4 o'clock, followed by a reception there at Eagle Creek Brewery. So we're pretty excited about that. And then the Good Hooks at Goldstream is going to be here on Thursday morning at 8:30 to talk about how you can do business and engage with their activities. And we're equally excited about Saturday, a big maker day taking place right on the backside of Seattle Bank. So we'll have opportunities, several teams have already registered to make herbiches, make catapults, and compete, as well as events for kids, thanks to the Good Hooks at Lowe's, as well as Kidtronics and different 3D manufacturers, different products, so people can see how these people piece together and work.
If people want to see that, the catapult cornhole, they just use what it is. What is that called?
It's going to be...
What type of the competition is that?
The, it starts at nine, runs till 2 o'clock. I think the competition is going to take place shortly after lunch, around 1 o'clock, 2 o'clock hour. So we'll be able to see how people do and what they construct and build. So there you go.
Do you have insurance, right?
Oh, yeah. Thank you, ma'am.
I just want to quickly say, this isn't on the agenda, but I mentioned it at the work session. And tonight, Brian Tatum, we've had, I don't want to use the word issues, but our sound system lacks or has been lacking and it's difficult to hear people when they come up and speak at the podium because it had a speaker that came towards us, but folks that were here in the audience could not hear. And obviously, you know, that's a concern because if you come to a meeting, you want to hear the folks that are speaking. So I asked him if he wouldn't mind a few months ago to see what we could do about improving that so that everyone would be able to hear what was being said. And they just installed a new system whereby the speaker comes out, this one, throughout the council chambers. So I think that was a good thing and I want to call him for his efforts and follow him in doing that. So in other words, when you're speaking, everybody can hear you. Agenda Item Seven is a consideration of a motion to adopt Resolution 2014-35, which is a resolution approving the City of Statesboro's proposed fiscal year 2015 street resurfacing list and further authorizing the mayor to execute the GDOT L-MIG application. The city shares at least 30 percent of matching funds to be funded through 2013 SPOSS. The city has $500,000 in 2013 SPOSS funds allocated to street resurfacing in fiscal year 2015. Brad, would you mind introducing this item to Council, please?
Yes, ma'am. On Item Number Six, that was just consideration of the motion to apply for the grant. And Item Number Seven, this is showing, this is approving the actual list of streets that were going to be resurfaced. So I could, you all have the list, so I guess I won't read through the whole thing, but if anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
So you were saying on these streets are going to be resurfaced through this, we will know when that, we have a schedule for that to be done?
On these streets, we'll have a general idea. We usually give the contractor a time period in which they can get it done. I mean, I know the exact date when it's going to happen, very far in advance, but...
But last year, we did put some stipulations on it around the university and Gentilly.
We typically do that, like for instance, Chandler Road is on there, so we will specify that that's going to be done when school's out, so...
Yeah, I just had to be Gentilly.
And Gentilly as well, that's the other one, yeah.
I love the Gentilly fun, you know?
Yeah. Gentilly and Chandler will be, we'll have some special conditions in the contract on those two, so...
Do I have any questions from Council, Brad, regarding Item Six? Okay. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2014-35?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item Number Eight, consideration of a motion to approve Resolution 2014-36, which is declaring the remainder Crescent Circle, which is over there near the Premon Baptist Church, proportional Crescent and an adjacent island as surplus in authorizing the disposition of such surplus property. Any?
Mayor, Council has previously approved closing these two streets. First thing, law approval of the Surplus Disposition Resolution, which is attached to the agenda, will allow staff to proceed with sealed bid process, disposal of the subject of land right away and the island that's in possession of the surrounding streets. Just to complete that process that'd be already started.
And what, once this declared as surplus, tell us the process going forward with that.
We'll work with city attorney to formulate a sealed bid process, get an appraisal of all the properties, and we'll advertise for two weeks in the paper and we'll receive sealed bids.
Okay.
And we'd like, one of the council members had a question before, if this would affect the CDVG grant and you'll see on there that we got the engineer for that project, we have retained the detention home area as well as the drainage across there, so we're taking that into account. Thank you, Reverend.
That's a pretty big drainage, too. Okay. Do I have any questions from Council regarding Resolution 2014-36? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve Resolution 2014-36?
So move.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Consideration of a motion to approve a reimbursement to Bethany's assisted living for the material cost difference between the required 12-inch water main and the standard 8-inch water main, Mr. Collins. Actually, I have a question about this one myself.
Man, Collins, water and wastewater. Yeah, Mayor Council in the past has approved different developments for the difference in material costs from the size of water main that they needed to serve their development versus what the city's master plan was approved for. I believe Grace Crossen approved for them to be reimbursed for the difference between the 8 and the 12, the required 12 that we run through Grace Crosson, was up there. Whispering Pines was approved also. This 12 inches will eventually, most likely, be extended and funded by the city from South Flake Road there or West Main. From Grace Crosson, excuse me, from Bethany Home back to Whispering Pines, that's 12 inch to Whispering Pines, and that would eventually be a loop back there. And I thought the car could borrow because I looked at the recommendation requests and it wasn't a cost in there. And it was about around $3,620, what they requested. And that's just the difference in material cost from 8 to 12. Any questions?
Actually, I do have, go ahead.
What did you say that number was?
It's $3,620, is the difference between the 8 and 12 inch material cost.
Now, why, again, do we do that for some developments? I know historically, you said we did it with Grace Crosson.
You're not obligated to. In the past, we have made recommendations from Mayor Council to reimburse based on it was the city's requirement, the city's needs to run a 12 inch, to complete a loop line. Developers, all they needed was an 8-inch line, the fire flow capabilities and requirements, and we've just done it, the city's done it in the past.
So we picked with a bigger pipe, but they install it and they pay all that...
Mobilization and everything. And this was very tiny. I know Whispering Pines, I don't have the dollar amount, but it was pretty extensive because there's a lot more linear footage that ran from Rucker Lane all the way to South Flake Road. We actually made them run further than they needed to run their water main to serve their development.
And why did we do that?
To get it through. They actually had the road be to developer of Whispering Pines, so we made them extend that water main, just like we would any other developer, to the furthest point of their park, and that was to South Flake Road. So all we have to do, once we've found it, we can pick up from their West Main, from Bethany Home, run out of South Flake Road or West Main to Whispering Pines and make that connection. And that'll loop back into 301, which has dual 12-inch water main. It's just to assist us in the future, so we've got larger capacity lines, larger sized lines, handling the fireflugs for major developments.
It's typically part of our master plan already, right? And that's how we come up with 12-inch line.
That's what our design engineers model and say we need to serve certain areas. And in the past, the city, as further about they went, the smaller diameter mains, and down that, that was not the way to get, you know, that's where it develops, so it's part of the master. No questions?
Counsel, do you all have questions? Okay, then, in that case, so I have a motion to approve a reimbursement to Bethany's assisted living for the material cost difference between the required 12-inch water main and the standard 8-inch water main.
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Agenda Item Ten, consideration of a motion to approve Resolution 2014-37, a resolution amending the job position classification and compensation plan for one of the current Assistant City Engineer positions within this engineering department. Jason, if you could please explain that to us.
Yes, ma'am. Currently, we have a vacancy in one of our two Assistant City Engineer positions, so we have rewritten the job description and title to better, to be more consistent and reflective with the current scope of duties and responsibilities at that position. There's no change in pay regarding this request, remains consistent where it was at the age of 21. It's just the same as the other Assistant City Engineer position. There's no change in personnel, still same total number of personnel in here, just as only applicable to one of the two Assistant City Engineer positions that currently have approved in this year's budget.
Does anybody have any questions, Reverend?
And I assume this person will run the utility, surely to be voted as a long-term thing, isn't it?
As well as our other former Assistant current head.
Okay. If I have no other questions from Council, do I have a motion to approve Resolution 2014-37?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Agenda Item 11 is a consideration of a motion to approve Resolution 2014-38, a resolution authorizing the submission of a grant application for $100,000 of funding to the 2014 Georgia Department of Natural Resources Recreation Trails Program for extension of Julius Abraham Trail from Church Street to Donnie Simmons Way, and to allow for commitment of city funds up to $70,000. Mandy, can you please present that item?
Yes, ma'am, be happy to. In 2009, the City of Statesboro submitted a grant application under this same program for $100,000 in funding to construct Phase One of this trail, which is behind the Little More Community Center. We successfully completed that with the pedestrian bridge that goes over to Morris Heights Apartments. And since that time, we have been looking to extend that trail from where the bridge ends, there at Church Street, over to Donnie Simmons Way. This is the first time that the program has been reopened for funding opportunities and it just opened in October. We happened to come and fund it and the deadline personnel of this grant is maybe around the 26th. So pursuant to our grant policy, we're writing this resolution to ask Council's permission to submit for the funding opportunity and to also commit to $70,000. However, I want to be clear with Council that because funding was, the opportunity was unexpected, we did not have funds allocated in the budget for this. If we were successful in this grant application, we would be bound to dedicate that $70,000 commitment in HCU CIP. We would have the timing from an opportunity standpoint to do that, but I think it's certainly something I want to bring to your attention, so you can consider that in your motion tonight.
So the grant, by submitting the grant, it purported we're bound at that point. Is that correct?
We would be, or we would need to discuss some amendments to the contract with the Georgia Department of Natural Resources before we entered into it. We did do that on Phase One, there were some commitments in Phase One that were, in my opinion, overextending the city. And so we went back and revisited those commitments with VNR and they agreed with us and we were able to come and just throw a standard agreement up at that time. But at this point, our estimates on what the extension of the cost was about, it would limit us to, it would fit us committing about $70,000 of city funding and it is a reimbursable grant. We would have to have a cash flow to front the expenses and then they would reimburse the same percentage.
So how much would we have to put out upfront per second?
Outfront, we would be floating cash on the entire cost of the home grant, that we would recoup $100,000 if we were successful in our application.
Here, am I correct in saying this was something you were very interested in?
That's right.
Would you like to speak about that?
Yes, I think it's needed there, it's a beautiful site. And I also mentioned the man, and I mentioned the beautiful, I mean, I prefer this to be the last stage of that, instead of crossing over Donnie Simmons Way, that little real old, I would think we'd go a little farther than right there, about the little house. Entire of the range, because people, they went coffee and all, and they can walk down to Donnie Simmons Way, down the sidewalk, then connect, you know? Not that many people live on the side of William James, and they go over there, walk down, come together with it. We don't need them that side.
The master plan that we turned in under 2009, so the phase we've completed, plus the phase we're considering tonight, along with the phase that the Council prefers to have to the Bullitt County education property, that this could complete it if you all wanted to. I have no idea, like this is the first time in five years of the funding opportunities been offered to us. They may not open prayer again for five years or they might not. I just don't know. But we can stop the Donnie Simmons Way if you all wish.
If you have to get a one, of course. That would be a downpour.
Do I have any other questions from Council?
If we were awarded the grant, when would we have to have the money ready, when we start spending, that kind of?
It's a two-year construction year, the time of the grant. We would not know, we would submit and remember, we would not know an answer, Council, probably through the spring, when we were successful in that application.
And then again, the two-year period usually starts at award time or at contract time?
At contract time, yes.
We could ostensibly go all the way out to 217.
The good thing is, we'll be in the budget process, we can work it in the CIP. I had recalled that she referred, like, that we had downsized the first time to get it into our budget, so...
We may do that.
Yeah, so we can, we get to that, that height, we can probably do that again, so I feel comfortable with it.
Anytime we can spend one and they give you two, we'll certainly go for it.
Okay, then, do I have a motion to approve Resolution 2014-38?
Make motion to approve, item number 11. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Agenda Item 12, an update on the recent amendments for the GMEBs, defined retirement benefit master plan by Director Paul Williams.
Good evening, Council. At least my purpose is really just to kind of update you on some amendments that were done by GMEBs, Honor Defined Benefit Retirement Plan. These were approved on September 26, 2014. There's nothing that you have to vote on or anything of that nature. I thought it was important to go ahead and put into the records that they made amendments to our master plan. There were a few amendments, I'm just going to mention two that I think are really important to us. The first one is the elimination of a waiting period. In essence, basically what's happened in the past, employee that starts with us, they have a date of hire and then they have to actually, this waiting period before they actually start administratively tracking their eligibility into our retirement plan. So if you start on this date, many years from now, they'll actually allow you to be eligible to start tracking your time, in terms of your vesting time, which is your enrollment date. They've now eliminated that waiting period and basically your date of hire is your enrollment date into the retirement plan, which is when they start tracking your vesting time. So there's really just an administrative change and we had some administrative issues, so this would just fix that. That was the first one. The second one is payment of death benefits to a surviving spouse or estate in absence of a designated pre-retirement beneficiary. The plan was amended to provide that effective July... The plan was amended to provide that effective July 15, 2015, in the absence of a designated pre-retirement beneficiary, pre-retirement death benefits will be payable in the form of a monthly annuity to the participant's surviving spouse, or if there's no surviving spouse, in the form of a lump sum payment to the participant's estate. In a nutshell, basically what they're saying is that our old plan design was set up to where it would pay a, if there was no, if there was no pre-retirement beneficiary form, the default, it would go actually to your surviving spouse. And then, if there was no surviving spouse, it would actually go to your survivor child, and then it would go to the parents. They've actually cut all of that out, and it would just literally go to your surviving spouse, and then it would go to your estate. So, and they kind of cut that out. One of the positions of GMA is that they've had a challenge with tracking them, children, tracking down parents, tracking down family members. One example, they talked to counsel, GMA counsel, was, they had a situation where they had two teenagers, their parents passed away, and there was two minors under 18, and the issue was that there was no pre-retirement beneficiary form that was filled out. So now you have two minors who have two claims, and the only way that they can receive it is one announces their claim. So those are some of the issues that they have on the back end, and the reason why they made these changes. Any questions remain? Does that make sense? And that is it. And I place the copy of the master plan in the records.
Thank you, Jim. Okay, we're going to move to agenda item 13. It's a presentation of findings by Mayor Moore regarding enforcement of the alcohol ordinance. That's what I said, I don't think I had any music with that. If I could get a sign to cut the lights in the back, here's, so we can see, I can just tell you right now that, you're probably not going to be able to see some of this just due to the size of the font, and we'll see if anything came out and lighted us up. Get rid of the Google thing and all that, so I think there's something I'd like you to go with. Okay, and so before you put the slides, I'm going to look at your notes to say next, okay? Let me explain a little background on this, and just to tell you, this is not a public hearing. This is a presentation of my findings. At the end of the presentation, I would ask counsel a whole questions. I know that there probably going to be some. I'll be happy to answer them. Again, this is not a public hearing. I will not be fielding questions about this from the audience. However, there are several copies that I have made, and they will be sitting there, first call, first served, when we're done. And the reason that I don't go ahead and hand them out, because I learned a long time ago, in issuing psychological reports, everybody goes to the summary, and it would just interrupt the process of going through this. And I set this up in a very specific way, so if you're kind of wondering where we're going with it, it'll all come to fruition as we go through. Again, this is not a public hearing. I will not take questions on this afterward. This is a report from me to counsel based on a request by counsel to look into this with some concerns that they had back at the beginning of October. So if you can please go to the next slide for me. Some of this I'll read, but, on October 7th, at the 9:00 AM city council meeting, the topic of administrative hearings for alcohol ordinance violations, or the like thereof, was brought before counsel. Councilman Chance asked why there had been no administrative hearings for alcohol violations brought before counsel in recent years. Councilman Rigs also expressed his concerns with this. And we've had additional concerns expressed to counsel as regards 50/50 alcohol food sales ratio required of license holders and the auditing of those food sales, as well as public concerns over the training of staff and businesses that sell alcohol. At the time this request was made, I pledged to look into the concerns of counsel, and have done so, and this is a result of that. I will tell you that I asked interim city manager Robert Cheshire, city attorney Alvin Leepart, and director of public safety Wendell Turner to gather certain information for me, and they did so. I had numerous questions. We sat down several times, because I would get stuff that I didn't think it was as clear as I thought that it needed to be. No fault of their own, it's just by who I am. So I think you'll find this to be comprehensive. I will not be making any recommendations at the end of this report, just so you know. Let's go to the next slide, please. This report will have legislative history. I think it's important that we look at legislative history, because as you see the ordinance change and things of that nature, you'll see why things began to go the way that they did. And here, you will look at the enforcement of the city of State for alcohol ordinance from a public safety standpoint, from an administration standpoint, city manager oversight, city council engagement, all that will be a part of this report. Next, please. Okay. In my opinion, if we want to understand the environment surrounding enforcement of State or City of State's code of ordinances, we need to look back to 2001 with the alcohol ordinance. Over the years, our ordinance has changed. Times changed, ordinance has changed, this alcohol ordinance in the City of State's where it's no exception to that, and those changes, I think, have contributed in some measure to the issues that we'll be talking about today. So if you go to the next slide, please. In 2001, we had an ordinance to our alcohol ordinance, an amendment, that among other things, created the Alcohol Control Board. That board was charged with screening and investigating and looking at all initial applications. They either could grant or deny it, and at that point, the applicant could appeal the decision to mayor and council. It also served a part of what it did was to recommend a mayor and council modification to ordinances and policies. And it began to hear alcohol violations and imposing punishment for each violation. If you go to the next slide, please. In 2004, there was an amendment to the alcohol ordinance, which required an alcohol service permit for most employees of a licensed establishment, including vouncers. That permit required a criminal background check. It also contained broad language that the chief of police could deny one if he felt or she, that something in that criminal background check was concerning enough that they thought they should not be a vouncer or an employee, and it placed itself on the board. And they had, the chief of police also had the authority to revoke the permit, that someone that weren't there based on charges or something like that, that that person had incurred during their tenure as an employee. In 2005, the ordinance removed the requirement that on a rare signed statement by CPA, are certified copies of state sales tax reports, copies of paid invoices from wholesale alcohol distributors, and copies of paid invoices from retail and wholesale food vendors be furnished. So there wasn't anything that you had to present certified as it regards 50/50 food sales. The consumption on premises report was required, which is what is today, how much of your sales are alcohol, and how much are food, and monthly state sales tax report. It did make, it did state that other documents and reports and records, et cetera, needed to be kept to confirm the accuracy if the Alcohol Control Board so chose to go in and look at them. In 2007, it became really clear as to what the Alcohol Control Board's job was. It wasn't quite as clear prior to 2007, even though the Alcohol Control Board functioned as a hearing entity where alcohol violations were concerned. But this spelled it out, that the clerk, city clerk, was to schedule a due process hearing before the Alcohol Control Board for any license holder alleged to have violated any provision of the alcohol ordinance. And they should have their due process in front of the Alcohol Control Board, and a certified letter would be delivered to them, letting them know enough in court. Now we start to get down to what I consider to be the meat of the situation as we go forward. Note that the last meeting of the Alcohol Control Board was held on December 4th, 2009. The ordinance change eliminating the Alcohol Control Board did not occur until December 6th, 2011. So there was roughly a two-year period there where the Alcohol Control Board was mandated by the ordinance, but it was not operational. Administrative hearings were held by the Alcohol Control Board. If we'll look, we had several, we had four actually in 2009. And if you look down below that, prior to the December 6th, 2011 ordinance change, and we are operating under the December 6th, 2011 ordinance, the board was dismantled and heard no other violations after December 14th. Although the 2007 ordinance was in place at the time, which dictated that the process of reviewing violations should go through the Alcohol Control Board, that was not the case. Therefore, those alleged to have violated the alcohol ordinance facing city council in February and May of 2011, and there were about five hearings that were held, five, six, or seven, something like that, they did not receive their due process as prescribed in the 2007 ordinance. Technically, they should have gone in front of the Alcohol Control Board, because that's what we required at the time. Current municipal court judge Keith Barber served as a city solicitor at the time the Alcohol Control Board ceased operating. He reported that he was told in the first quarter of 2010, and he reported this to me, I think that you were in the, there at the same time, Mr. Leepart, that he was told in the first quarter of 2010 by city administration that the Alcohol Control Board would not be functioning any longer after December 2009 meeting, and that his services would no longer be needed in that capacity. That going forward, violations of the alcohol ordinance would go in front of city council. He did not say he told him that, that he just said it administrate, the city administration told him that. Judge Barber was appointed State's for Municipal Court Judge in March 2010, so he no longer served in that capacity anyway. Now, according to city council member minutes, prior to the administrative hearings held recently in October, November 2014, and this was the question that counsel proposed to me, the only administrative hearings for alcohol-related violations after December 14th, 2009, were held during city council meetings on February 15th, 2011, and May 3rd, 2011. Those, actually, those hearings were held for compliance violations that the Department of Revenue found, when they did one of their citywide compliance checks. There were no hearings held for five compliance violations that occurred in the first quarter of 2010, but the DOR just did not turn this up, too. They did not. So the question that begs here, and the question that was asked a month ago, is what happened from May the 3rd, 2011, going forward until October 2014? There was not an alcohol violation hearing in front of this body during that trip shot. So in July of 2011, there were approximately 42 citations that were issued to approximately 16 different licenses. The citations issued to the individuals were received by the municipal court in July 2011, and arraignment dates set for the various citations. So let me explain, a citation is issued to an individual, they go to criminal court. That citation is evidence of wrongdoing by licensee. It is then given over to city council to hear administratively, as it involves the licensee. So depending on the particular citation, an arraignment date was initially set for either early August 2011 or early September 2011. It appears, based on what we've been able to find out, that the arraignment's were either continued, or not guilty pleas were entered, and these matters did not appear on the municipal court docket until January and February 2012. So these things occurred, these citations were issued in a major compliance check operation done by the State's for Police Department in July 2011, and did not show up on the municipal court docket until January and February 2012. So the question is, what happened there? On August 3rd, 2011, there was an email from staff attorney Michael Graves to Detective Sergeant Robert Bryan stating the following. "Rob, council is holding all alcohol violations until a later time. I wanted to give you a heads up." Several days later, staff attorney Michael Graves presented. And I talked with Michael Graves, and his input is in here in just a minute. In September 2011, director Turner, public safety director Turner, reports that he asked city manager Parker, Frank Parker, when city council hearings on the alcohol violations from July 2011 would be held. When will the city hear these 42 violations? He reports that Mr. Parker said all hearings in front of council were being postponed until the alcohol ordinance was revised and adopted. Now, on December 6th, 2011, the new alcohol ordinance was adopted. On December 11th, 2011, Alvin Leepart was hired as city attorney. Now, the changes in the alcohol ordinance, and let me just state, those violations could have been heard and should have been heard under the all alcohol ordinance. They never would have been heard under the new alcohol ordinance, because they did not occur after the new alcohol ordinance was adopted. So in 2011, the new alcohol ordinance was adopted, and this ordinance had significant changes in it. The Alcohol Control Board was abolished, and mayor and council are to hear violations of the ordinance officially. Requirement for alcohol service permits were removed. That means if you went to work in an establishment and served alcohol, you no longer had to get a background check to see if you had any background involved, an alcohol violation of your own, or crime, or misdemeanor, or whatever. It also minimized penalties for violations of the alcohol ordinance, and reduced the look-back window from 24 months to 12 months. What that means is, when you get an alcohol violation, you look back, and how far back do you take the history of the licensee into account? You look 24 months, how many violations have they had in the last 24 months, and how many, or how many violations have they had in the last 12? This was how, this was changed to the last 12. Go to the next slide, please. If you look, and that's hard to see, these were the changes, is you look across, from 1997 to 2001 to 2007 to 2011. And 2007, all, from since 97, you had to look back two years to see which violations were, and taking into account what the penalty would be, the number of violations that you had. In 2011, that was changed to 12 months. In 1997 through 2000, up to 2011, council shall impose penalties on violations. In 2011, it became council may impose penalties on violations, not required to. And you can see that it went... And you can see that it went, you know, things changed from fines to three-day suspension down to a May one-day suspension rewarding, from second offense, 30-day suspension, down to three-day suspension. Third offense went from a two-year suspension down to a 10-day suspension, and you have the ability to revoke, an automatic revocation, down to maybe revoke to the fifth one. So there was definitely a change in policy at this point. Okay. So, next slide, we're going up to January 2012. We still have 42 violations hanging out there. Attorney Lee Park receives a docket from the Municipal Court, which contained almost all of the 42 violations of the alcohol ordinance from July 2011. I think this would have been your first receptive trip to court, you were just hired in December. So Lee Park reports that he never addressed the issue of how alcohol ordinance violations are handled, either municipal court or administratively, before mayor and council for action on the license. So Lee Park reported that he sought the advice of then-City Manager Frank Parker. What do we do? And Lee Park reports that he was told by Parker that the administrative hearings on citations had been placed on hold while he was revising the alcohol ordinance. And that again is the same as what Director Turner said. And these allegations of violations would not be brought before mayor and council for administrative hearing. Lee Park then reports asking Parker whether the prosecution of the individual defendants in municipal court should go forward, because that's also a part of it. He reports that Parker said he did not think they should go forward. So Lee Park reports dismissing the citations. He reports that to this day, he does not know if the governing body was ever made aware of the 2011 citywide compliance check operation and the resulting violations. He said he just doesn't know. If you turn to the next page, or look at the next slide please, you will see the alcohol compliance checks that were done. Now this isn't the number of compliance checks, this just shows the number of citations that resulted from them. If you will look, in 2010, there were 12 citations that resulted from those checks. If you look at 2011, there were 49 citations. None of those ever, well, that, I misspoke, I misspoke, let me back up. The seven, the seven citations from November of 2010 were heard in front of council, the 49 from 2011 were never heard. If you go to 2012, you will see that six citations were given, those were done through compliance checks by the Department of Revenue. They turned them over to state court, and the City of Statesboro was not notified of those citations. If you look at 2013, there were 36 citations issued. The one in November was recently heard, because it was within the 12-month look back. The first 35 were never heard by council. They never came in front of council. And then in 2014, all have been heard. If you will look in 2011, between the 42 and the three, there's an asterisk, which was an email from Michael Graves to Rob Bryan telling the City Council to hold alcohol violations until a later time, and yes, we do have a copy of that email. If I can go to the next slide please. After the dismissal of the citations in January 2012, and you have to understand that those citations were not only dismissed at the municipal court level, they never made it here. Lee Park reports that the employees of the Statesboro Police Department were very angry and frustrated, in that it was a strong, clear blow to their morale. In interviewing officials with the Statesboro Police Department, including Director Turner and Lieutenant Bryan, and I did that interviewing, they reported that the department was very disappointed when all the citations were dismissed, and nothing presented to council. At that point, they determined that compliance checks were not a priority of the administration of the city. It takes a great deal of effort to do them, by the way. And the Statesboro Police Department did not do any citywide compliance operations until asked through a grant process to participate in a study that was commenced in March of Based on this incident, Lee Park reports that he did not again seek the counsel of the former city manager on any matter pending in the municipal court, and left the scheduling of administrative hearings before the mayor and council to the administration. Lee Park stated at no time that he received any instruction from any official that it was his responsibility to ensure that administrative hearings in front of mayor and council occurred. There were no, let me repeat this, there were no citywide compliance check operations carried out from July 2011 until March 2013 by the Statesboro Police Department. The Georgia Department of Revenue did continue to carry compliance checks operations out. So the Department of Revenue issued six citations during compliance checks. Those citations were turned over to state court for prosecution. Officials with the Department of Revenue, who I spoke with, said they did not want to send any more citations through the Statesboro Municipal Court for fear of dismissal, as had occurred in January 2012. The City of Statesboro was not notified of those violations by the Department of Revenue. They're not obligated to do so. On March 2013, as I stated before, a major compliance check operation both city and county resulted in the Statesboro Police Department issuing 21 citations. A follow-up to the March operation resulted in the issue of 14 more citations by the Statesboro Police Department. So here we sat with 35 citations at the end of July. On August 23rd, 2014, an email was sent to Alvin Lee Park, Frank Parker, Sue Starling, and Rob Bryan from Director Wendell Turner. The email stated the following. "Alvin, FYI, attached is the list documenting violations for alcohol establishments during recent PD operations. Call Sergeant Patrick Harrelson if you have any questions. I'll recite with A U T C, which is Uniform Traffic Citation X Level." Yes, we have that email as well. A U T C is a Uniform Traffic Citation, it's a charging document that begins the criminal prosecution of the individual in municipal court. The citations referred to by Director Turner were adjudicated in municipal court, with to go under state court for trial. Lee Park stated he never received any instruction from any official that it was his responsibility to ensure that administrative hearings on alcohol violations in front of council occur. Lee Park felt the email from the former staff attorney in August 2011, postponing administrative hearings, showed that whether to have administrative hearings was a determination of council, and after January 2012, he felt the decision as to conducting hearings in front of council was at the discretion of the city's administration. It became apparent in August 2013, there were simply no meaningful administrative policies, practices, or procedures in place for holding an administrative hearing after the December 2011 revision of the alcohol ordinance, which removed, I guess, removed language which stated how it should be done. Hearings before council were never held to address the 35 violations in 2013, even though Public Safety had notified key administrative staff in writing that the violations existed. So how the process worked in the past. And from 2007 to 2009, citations were sent from municipal court to the city clerk through the send-out of summons for the licensee to appear before the Alcohol Control Board. January 2010, the Alcohol Control Board ceased operating. No more review of violations and recommendations to City Council. February and May of 2011, there were seven, or six, or seven hearings that were done based on some Department of Revenue citations that caused, they requested them, brought them down, one of the hearing numbers. August 2011, all administrative hearings on violations of the alcohol ordinance were put on hold. The email by former city staff attorney Michael Graves. January 2012, 42 violations from July, September 2011 were dismissed in municipal court and never brought before council. City administration were, was aware of these violations, it is not clear the City Council was made aware of them. In 2013, 35 violations issued by the Statesboro Police Department from March, August 2013, adjudicated in municipal court, not brought before council. City administration was aware of these violations. In my opinion, it is not clear the City Council was made aware of them. One citation issued in November 2013 by Department of Revenue was heard by City Council on November 4th, 2014. Two citations issued in April 2014 were heard by City Council on November 4th, 2014. Citations issued in August, September, and October of this year have been heard by City Council. Procedures to have alcohol violations come before council have been implemented by interim City Manager Robert Cheshire and City Attorney Alvin Lee Park. These procedures are being strictly adhered to at this time. During this time, I think it's important to note that there were many key employee changes. Folks that were used to doing things a certain way were gone, and a process was never put back into place per se. You can see, between 2008 and 10, city clerk resigned, municipal court clerk resigned, police retired, city tax clerk was transferred to another position, city solicitor resigned in 2010, new public safety director hired in 2010, May, July 2010, new staff attorney hired, that served as city solicitor, and September 2010, city manager resigned, and interim city manager Frank Parker was put into place. August 2011, staff attorney Michael Graves resigns after serving only 13 minutes in December 2013 months, excuse me, he served only 13 minutes. December 2011, new city attorney, city attorney hired. I'll give you my conclusions. Y'all can take the document away and make your own. My conclusions are the following, that between 2011 and 2014, the Statesboro Police Department and/or the Georgia Department of Revenue continued to perform compliance checks in Statesboro. However, after July 2011, Department of Revenue stopped sending their reports of alcohol ordinance violations to the city clerk's office for further handling. Pending alcohol violations over 40 at the time, in August 2011, were put on hold at the Statesboro Police Department by the city staff attorney Michael Graves, and being heard by city council until further notice, at the direction of someone at the city. According to Mr. Graves, it was either the city manager, mayor, and council, or a combination thereof, that he is unable to remember who specifically instructed him to do so. He does remember being told to put them on hold while the ordinance was being revised. These violations were dismissed for prosecution in 2012, or were not presented to council as violations of the alcohol ordinance that would have had an effect at the time the violations occurred. Furthermore, documentation provided by the Statesboro Police Department illustrated that on at least one occasion, August 2013, they submitted their report of alcohol-related violations, 35, to city hall staff, including the city manager, but the lack of follow-up by anyone resulted in the cases not being processed through administrative hearings. Note, these alcohol-related violations were still adjudicated in the city's municipal court by City Attorney Lee Park. Interviews of key employees suggest that the current, the city's current alcohol ordinance adopted in December 2011, which replaced the previous alcohol ordinance in its entirety, was drafted by the city manager without any consultation of the Statesboro Police Department or the city clerk's office. In addition, this version of the alcohol ordinance was drafted during a period when the city had neither a staff attorney nor a city attorney. City staff was not updated and trained on the changes made in the adoption of the 2011 ordinance. Language in the city's alcohol ordinance does not firmly detail the process for transmitting applicable alcohol-related citations from the issuing authority to the city clerk's office, whereby an administrative hearing would be scheduled. It is very surprising that mistakes have been made when it comes to holding administrative hearings, particularly when hearings that should have been held in the fall of 2011 were not held, and the cases subsequently dismissed in January of 2012 after the new ordinance had been adopted. That would have been the perfect opportunity to create a process for doing so, since the Alcohol Control Board was no longer the functioning conduit of the process. Significant changes in key staff positions, followed by inadequate training and oversight of city staff regarding proper administration of the city's new alcohol ordinance, led to confusion and mistakes, including not ensuring that alcohol ordinance violations were brought forward to City Council in the form of administrative hearings. In addition, there was clear lack of oversight by the city manager's office in ensuring that these violations were processed and brought before the council. In conclusion, in my opinion, it is hard to believe that more than 75 violations of the city alcohol ordinance over a 26-month period, July 2011 through August 2013, could go unheard by mayor and city council, and further that the administration appeared disinterested in the due process that had been put forward previously in alcohol ordinance and promised to the citizens of Statesboro. And that is my report. I will take any questions from council as well.
I have attached in the back the violations that were not heard, both in 2011 and 2013. I would also ask, there was a lot of information that was gathered to produce this, and it took an inordinate amount of time, but I think it was important, because I think we learned from our mistakes. We learned from trusting others to do their jobs when perhaps we should have been asking more questions. One of the questions that was asked to me by a councilman is, where do we go with this? What does this tell us? I think this tells us that, you know, we gotta get our house over. I think we're doing a good job of doing that, but we can never turn a blind eye to process. We have to make sure that processes are in place, so that these things don't happen. We have to make sure that we look at ordinances very carefully before we pass them, to make sure they've got the need of them, so that processes aren't behind. One thing I would ask council is that the information that was provided to me by Attorney Lee Park, city manager Cheshire has a report as well, I've asked me to print copies of. You will see that this is not all Mayor Jan Moore, a lot of this came from these individuals in the room that I asked to present information to me of their findings. So I'm gonna ask, my, my position is, and what I'm going to do is to turn that information over and make it public. I would like to ask the support of council to do that. If I have a motion from council to, you know, to give me a show of support to turn that information over.
Are you talking about the information?
No, I'm talking about the report that Robert did.
Okay.
This stuff, all this stuff comes from it, and the report that Alvin did. I would like to ask for your support in doing that.
Absolutely.
Do I have a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion.
Motion of support that Mayor Moore turned over and made public the documents that she was given that comprised this report, that do not, you know, put anything confidential that would be in some sort of a police report, or something like that out.
So move.
Do I have a second? Do I have any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying no.
All in favor, please state by saying aye. Opposed? Thank you for that motion of support. What will be made available to the public are those documents, which include, we have copies of this. Like I said, I have X number of copies. We made 25, so roughly 18 in the pile after that.
Maybe you could put that on the website.
I'm all with that. Ms. Cindy has the slides. Has it some? There's copies here of city manager Cheshire's report, who I asked him to make copies of that as well. And then, if you would like a copy of the volume that city attorney Lee Park did, a lot of that has the old ordinance in it, ordinances in it with, you know, emails and things of that nature that we gathered up during this time. That's a different story. That would cost you. It's just, it's a lot of pages. Happy to do it for you, but, I mean, it's public, but it is a volume that'll have to be reproduced. And so, whatever our typical rate for doing that, just to let you know. Do I have any questions from council or any comments regarding this at this time?
Thank you for looking into that. Thank you for the report.
Do I have any other comments before we move on to other business from city council? Okay, agenda item 14 is other business from city council. I don't have any. Does anyone else, does anybody else want to go ahead and forward this stuff? Okay, city managers' comments, please. Okay, just fine. We'll move to agenda item 16, which is public comments. We have one person who just asked to make a public comment, and that's Mr. Phil Cox. Please do it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. I appreciate the opportunity to come before you. This is the last time that I'll be coming before you on this topic. For the last eight years, I've risen before council to ask for an investigation into these and many other troubling things in the city. I'm very pleased and proud that that investigation is occurring right now before us. So, happy that the FBI has come in and showed great interest. I'm thankful for that. Twice, I've offered myself up to the surface of the city in elective office. I no longer wish to do that. Really, my focus now is on tearing this mess down and making sure that it gets rebuilt in the former glory of the city of Statesboro reflect credit upon those that have gone before us. And I know that the people behind me would like to see that happen as well. I think all of this speaks to why I chose to see the departure of Stan York as something different, Mr. Mayor, not as a retirement party. But, I think that all of this has something to do with the reason that Stan York was fired. And I think that if we had Stan here in the room today, he'd tell you that he didn't choose to retire. He was fired. And I agree with that. From this point on, the way I see it, council interference and fear and intimidation ends with this investigation. I don't think it's gonna continue. I think that the citizens of the city of Statesboro have probably gone to their last mandatory retirement seminar. The fear and intimidation ends. It's over. I will tell you that I'm gonna press on undaunted in what I've been doing. There's been some fear tactics lobbed my way, some terroristic actions taken against me. And I want you to know that I'm not afraid of it. I've reported it to the FBI and it's under investigation. So, I don't think any of us in this room are unaffected by all of these things that have been allowed to go on for so many years in the city of Statesboro. Ladies and gentlemen, you can quit sending me documents. You can just take them to number one, North Main Street. Stanley Slater would be happy to have them. I do appreciate all of your cooperation and your help that you've given me, sharing the information. Stanley's number is 515-5746. As for those of you who have been mistreated in your workplace, Dan Snipes is waiting on your phone call, and he's eager to help you. Together, I think we can all put this city back together and make it work. I don't have anything else to say. But, thanks for allowing me to speak today, Mr. Mayor. And I hope that you'll continue along the path that you appear to have taken today. Thanks.
I did not think that we had a reason to go into executive session. It was on the agenda, but I don't have any reason. Personnel will say a litigation matter unless there's something. Okay, in that case, I'm gonna ask for a consideration of a motion for adjournment, please. Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.